Okay, good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the Grafton School Committee in March 26th. Open the meeting at 7:00 PM. Just a quick chairperson's update. We have a full house here tonight. I'm very happy to see a lot of parents, teachers, and more importantly, students here in the audience. So I can't wait to get to all of you this evening. But first up, we're just going to go through a couple of things in our agenda, and then we'll call up the first person in order here. But is there any member from the community or groups or citizens that would like to address the school committee at this time? Okay, hearing none. We're going to go right into educational reports. We had a last-minute change here, but Ms. Lisa Rice is here to talk about some exciting developments here in the Grafton Public Schools with regards to enrichment summer programming.
Thanks for having me. So I wanted to just talk briefly about our summer season of learning that we're fast approaching, and I wanted to share with you some of the new things that we're doing and some of the things that we've done in the past. So first, our summer season of learning starts at kindergarten screening day in March and June for our new incoming kindergarteners. They come in, they do a series of fun activities with the teachers, and they have an opportunity to meet with reading teachers at that time at South Grafton and North Grafton Elementary School. We hand them a small packet of information about reading and things that they can do over the next few months to prepare themselves for kindergarten. So we find it to be a nice way and answer any questions parents might have about what's ahead of them for kindergarten. So that begins our summer programming. Then we move into anyone who is incoming to kindergarten in first grade. We've moved away from the traditional mandated summer reading. You've got to read these four books. And about four years ago in 2016, we offer a summer bingo for our incoming kindergartners and our incoming first graders. And it's not just reading, as much as I'd love to just make it all about reading. We do have squares in there about practice putting on a winter coat. Look at some colors. Name some colors. Count one through 10. Say the ABCs. So it's a great way. It's an incentive-based program, but it is a great way to get kids learning during the summer months. And then for our students heading to Millbury Street and North Street, so those are our current first graders through fifth graders, we have the summer learning passport. That is very close to being printed for this summer. And again, moving away from the traditional summer reading mandate, we have opportunities for students to visit museums and get points for that. They can do outdoor adventures. We have, of course, reading in there. We also have a math calendar for them to do. New this year, they can earn points if they attend some of our summer enrichment programs, which I'll talk about next. I would like to give a good shout-out to our PTOs who sponsor. They spent about $650 at Millbury Street and North Street on our prizes for this program. We give out gift cards to Swirls and Scoops. Then we give out gift cards to Lasatag and the Movies. And the big grand prize at every grade level is a Kindle Fire. So that's very exciting, but we could not make that happen without the support of the And then, brand-new this year, which I'm very excited about, is our summer season of learning enrichment programs. We are offering 62 different sessions this summer for four weeks during the summer. We are starting, I want to make sure I get the dates right, July 15th through August 5th. We're offering it for four weeks in the AM and the PM. They're three-hour sessions. This is a self-funded program, meaning user fees pay for it. There will be nothing out of the Grafton Public School budget for that. And it ranges anywhere from STEAM activities, math activities, author studies. We have some physical activities in there, some art. I was very impressed with the session ideas that came our way. It was, it couldn't only happen with the creative, it couldn't happen without the creativeness of the teachers. I'm very, very impressed with all the programs that they've offered, and that's what I passed around to all of you. For parents at home, they can find that on the Grafton Public School website. We have copies of it at every one of our schools, and the Grafton Library was kind enough to put some copies out as well. If parents want to register, all they have to do is send the registration form and their payment in with their child to school, or they can mail it to any of the schools as well. So we got our first couple registrations today. I was very excited to make those trips to the schools for that. And then, one last summer learning that I'd like to highlight is something that we do for our students in our reading program, in our Tier Two reading. We started this a few years ago. Our students in reading that receive support from our reading specialists get mail six times during the summer from us. They get two sets, two things of books. They get handwritten letters from their reading teacher, and then they get a packet of activities that they receive as well. So we're trying to, every eight to 10 days, reach out to our students in that Tier Two program to just remind them to keep up learning all summer long. That's the highlights of our summer program. Any questions?
I think, I love the summer season of learning. Like, it's a lot of going through it, just a lot of great programs that you're offering, and I think, I'm excited to see how it comes out.
Me too.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to thank you, Lisa. And I hear such great things about you and your team.
Thank you.
Whenever I'm around and the schools are in town, your name comes up all the time, and people rave about the work that you and your team are doing. So I just want to pass that along, and I think this is fantastic. It's an affordable, it's an affordable way for parents to find something that's meaningful and educational and fun for their kids of the summer, which it's not always easy to find those things, and it's kind of with familiar, could be with familiar people and a familiar environment, which could really help a child if they're anxious. And I love, I love this so much. And I hadn't heard about the letter writing, which I think is fantastic to just keep those connections going, and, you know, people don't really get mail as much anymore. I know my kids always, we've had several teachers over the years give out their address and write letters back and forth over the summer, which I think is phenomenal, but this just kind of takes it up another level. So I just want to say thank you and pass that along to everybody that worked on this with you.
Thank you very much.
It's a great idea, Lisa, and I'm so pleased to see it.
Yeah, thank you.
Lisa, is there anything we can do to help you?
No, I appreciate being here to be able to get the word out to parents so that they can send in some registrations and we can get the groups full for the enrichment.
I enjoy that you think that being here gets out the word, but, no.
Yes!
This is typical for us, this interest. And we are, we haven't mentioned it, but I believe we are live.
It's working.
So, I mean, that makes, people could be tweeting about it right now.
Yeah, we did post it on Facebook, so that's exciting. Richard Price is going to support it in the Grafton News as well. So we just have to find some great channels to get the word out, so this is a great one.
Well, we'll make sure we share across our channels as well. I have over 1,000 Twitter followers, so.
Yeah. I think I have 25, so thank you.
I'm like, you're an influencer.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Lisa, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, we have the Millbury Street Elementary School Improvement Plan and Update with Joanne Stockland and Mary Cokely.
It's not a competition.
Yeah, it's funny. It's not for me.
Do we need it in now?
No.
Okay. I don't know, am I on the mic now? Yeah. No, that's it, that's it. All right, thanks. Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you. Well, here we are again. Seems like a year went really fast to present our action steps that we implemented in Millbury Street School as we worked towards and meet our goals for the past two years on our school improvement plan. I just want to share with you on the beautiful drawing of the front of our school is done by Leo Gumoko. He's a sixth grader. Every year, we have a contest with sixth graders for the yearbook cover, and that's this year's winner. So that is Leo's artwork. So, working with my school advisory council, we create our school improvement plans. The mission of the Millbury Street School Advisory Council will be to collaborate to further strengthen the educational programming in order to meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of our diverse community of learners. I do like to take a moment just to recognize the council members. Katira Lazarin is a parent, Kathy Lazo, another parent, and we have Diane Silver, who is a parent, and Jody Simpson rounds out our parents on the council. Heidi Shore, one of my third-grade teachers, is on the council, along with Tracy Estefan, a fifth-grade teacher who is here to present tonight. Jenny Lee, a second-grade teacher, also serves on the council. Jenny Lee? Jenny Lee is here tonight. So our goals for the last two years have been in four areas: curriculum instruction, assessment, emotional, social-emotional learning, and community. And Dr. Cokely and I tonight would like to share with you some of the things we've implemented this year to meet each one of those goals.
So I'm going to start with curriculum and instruction. So although there are several themes that we're working on, these are some of the highlights that we'd like to share with you. So Project Read: Written Expression is a professional development, I guess, a program that teachers have been learning to utilize in their classroom with the semantics of writing. And they have worked in developing lesson plans and meeting with each other to talk about how that's implemented in the classroom. They have also met vertically and horizontally to align the state standards in social studies. So we combine with North Street and the teachers at each grade level, and they review the standards and then update that in the Atlas mapping tool. They, we had also K through 12 teachers this year met for a math summit, and those were teachers who had a particular strong interest in mathematics. And during that first meeting, we talked a little bit about what the strengths and maybe some areas of need are in mathematics. And after that summit, we worked and looked at our, our, what am I trying to say?
Power standards.
Power standards, sorry. And we looked at our power standards, and we were trying to review the process that we're implementing our curriculum. So we looked at what things we introduce on a yearly basis, what we master, and what we practice. And it gave us a better sense of what, where our focus would be. Excuse me. And then the last one is that part of our professional development related to curriculum instruction is teachers would go to professional development opportunities and then come back to the building to share what they had learned. So a couple of them that we highlighted here were the executive functioning session that the teachers who went to the Down Syndrome concert, conference brought back to talk about. And then mask queue, assisted technology, and how that could be utilized in the classroom. Motivating readers and writers from the literacy conference. And then assisted technology in the classroom is a class that two teachers are taking, and it's over the course of the year, and they come back and share what they've learned during that time, too. And just when you were wondering if it was all going to be text, you know I like to share my pictures. So we do want to share in context not only what we're done in goal in, you know, writing, but the pictures always encapsulate a lot. And even though we have four different goals, as we go through them, you're going to find that they all intertwine with each other and cover so many different facets of our school improvement plan and what we're doing at the Millbury Street School. So starting in the upper-left corner, that is a live webcast with an author that the sixth grade had been studying, and they did a live discussion with her. She talked about a piece of writing around Death Valley, and the kids were able to actually type in questions while she was speaking. She actually recognized Grafton and our school during the live webcast. It was all over the world. So the kids were just so enthralled after studying the author, studying the text, and then getting on live with her, and knowing that kids all across the country were doing this at the same time. It was extremely exciting and engaging. There's Dr. Cokely going clockwise, working with the teachers at the math summit. That's what Project Read: Written Expression looks like, part of the instructional piece on the board, and it is diagramming sentences that we used to do when we were younger. But I love that picture. I was observed, that's Katie Weskin, who is here tonight. I was observing her, and although it can be scripted and pretty, you know, you follow the routine of building the skills with the children of diagramming and labeling the sentences, but Katie really was able to put her own flavor into it and talk to the kids about moving the predicate around and making the writing their own and giving them the freedom. And I was just impressed that she could deliver that content, but also in her instruction, make it personalized and exciting for the kids, and it was just impressive. And then down here, the last picture I have is, that's a picture of a staff shares. That is one of our parents, Jessica Bedulla, who's also a speech-language pathologist. And she, every year, has encouraged me, and I have sent teachers to the Massachusetts Down Syndrome Conference. And this year was on executive functioning, and it was fabulous, and we felt that all the kids could benefit from it. So she came in and paired with some of my teachers and did a long faculty meeting on executive functioning. And it was just nice to have a parent come in with that expertise and share right along with the staff. So some of the highlights in assessment this year is teach-
Oh, go ahead.
Do you want me to do that one? Okay, I think I'll do this one, okay. So for the assessment, we were able this year, in the last couple of years, Lisa Rice has guided the reading teachers to look at the data that we have, and been able to do two phases of Title I reading implementation. The first phase of the year, and then we look at the second half of the year, the kids that cycle out because they've made great improvements, and then we pick up kids that look like they might have started struggling during the school year. This year, they were able to build in an RTI block just specifically for fluency on those kids that were on the bubble. They didn't quite make it into Title I reading, but they looked like they could benefit some from extra fluency practice. So they picked those kids up, they're meeting with them like 15 minutes during their regular language arts block to work specifically on increasing their fluency rate. That's new this year. We did begin to implement in our trimester reading assessments, no longer just assessing every kid for the sake of assessing. We've given teachers a little bit of liberty. Those kids that are progressing above grade level, maybe two grades above, whether they're reading, they no longer have to just put a score into the data sheet. We know that they're doing what they're doing, and it's allowing teachers more instructional time, but we're also building in, into their pedagogy more, looking at what their formative instruction looks like in the classroom and using their professional judgment as they're doing reading instruction and knowing where kids actually are and not relying on thinking that they have to have that score. They know where their kids are performing in the classroom, they're more attuned to that. And then, of course, we look forward to this May as we get our training on the new Fontis and Pennel Benchmark Assessment System. That's an exciting step forward for us, for our reading assessment practice. And so we'd like to share a few pictures about assessment. The first one is a Jeopardy game that Mrs. Waller is using in her classroom. She's here with us tonight. Where the students are on the whiteboard, the questions are asked pertaining to social studies or science, and then every student gets to answer the question, and then as a team, they come up with their final answer. On the right, that's Mrs. Waller as well. The Chromebooks are being implemented in each of the classrooms for a variety of reasons, one being assessment, whether it is through our Envisions math program, some final drafts in writing, and Quizlet, where students gather together and team up on a review. Usually, social studies is one thing that teachers are using them for. And then your bottom-left, Ms. Pignataro is performing a discreet trial with one of her students, and she's using a token board to motivate and confirm that the student has participated and is showing their knowledge. So social-emotional learning has been a great emphasis for us this year. It's something that's very important to Millbury Street School. It is not new to us, but we are looking at it. We have focused a lot about how to build relationships with students. We had students complete a survey so that we had insights into how they were feeling about things in the community and the building. And we have, really, we've done a couple of different things. We created student relationship maps. We hung around the building, and we had lists of students, and we had different teachers walk around to see who they recognized, who they might have a relationship with. So the way we signified it was, could they name the child, and did they know something about them, whether it was academically, personally, or a family connection? And it was quite revealing. We had several staff really surprised of the variety of interactions that teachers, staff members, classroom teachers had with a lot of students. There were some students that weren't highly recognized, but we, at the following meeting, we talked about why that might be. And so then we created some task force to really develop on how do we make sure every student in the building is recognized and that students are able to have people in the building that they are comfortable with outside of just their classroom teacher. We continue to implement a growth mindset culture in our classroom communities. That is according to what they're performing academically, but also their behavior and how they relate to other people. And that connects with the next one, which is the reset button that we've come up with. So the reset button, the idea is, we naturally make mistakes as we learn. So what students have been asked to do, and teachers, is to reset. We've made a mistake, how do we go on and build from that? And that's an academic mistake, as well as maybe a choice that somebody has made and they need to restart, because there's a full school day, every day, that we need to build and support each other, and it's been really well-received by all of the students and staff. And then there's a group of teachers who are participating in a cell book study with Mrs. Stockland leading that, and that is also receiving a lot of accolades. And I do want to note before I go to the next slide, I did put that asterisk by the cell PD because I didn't want to say this year that we are including all staff in the half-day PD, our IAs and our BLAs, as well as their participating in the book study. And that has made a huge impact as far as the collaboration and people using the same vocabulary around the discussions, especially when we did the relationship mapping of the students. I'm going to just switch to that slide so you can see. That picture in the upright corner is the hallway at Millbury Street School when we hung up 700 names of children on sheets, and every staff member read every kid's name and marked the level of relationship they knew. And it was extremely impactful, and to have the IAs and the BLAs and the nurses participate in that piece of it was really phenomenal. So we're appreciative of having that opportunity to include them in the PD work at the school year on sale. Below the picture of the staff mapping children are those two cuties, and they are showing the use of the reset button. I did bring some extra reset buttons, and anyone feels they need to take one with them. So I have a reset button. Down next to them, as I go around clockwise, that's one of our sixth graders. He is doing a growth mindset lesson with second graders that he developed. So he was, has visited actually many second and third grade classrooms to share his lesson, and he has selected some books, too, that he enjoys sharing with him on a growth mindset. And then up at the top, that was sort of an in-house service project that this group of sixth-grade girls did with a parent and myself. That was the inspirational quotes that we put in the girls' upstairs bathroom. We do plan on doing, we did the girls' downstairs bathroom, too. We do plan on doing the boys' bathrooms. However, our first quote went up, there was a little bit of sticky fingers in the sixth grade and fifth grade boys' hallway, so I told them we were going to wait until that passed, and I can buy sheets of contact paper to put up over the final quotes, but we will be doing those in the springtime.
Joanne?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, I'm sorry.
Great job. What is the, what's the SEL book, the book study?
It's the book that we purchased for the whole district. It's the SEL in the classroom.
Oh, great. Thanks.
So, Dr. Cokely's getting that. So this year, we really pride ourselves at Millbury Street School of being a very strong school community, and the community we recognize is just not inside the walls of our building. We can't be a strong school without not only the surrounding neighborhood, but the businesses, the other schools in the district, outside of the district. It's just, the people are just what's so important. And we could probably come up with a much longer list of everybody that's contributed every business to our school's success, but these are ones that we're going to highlight at this moment. Can't do anything without our SGPTO. They've been phenomenal as far as jumping in when we needed something right away, providing us enrichment. They're just phenomenal people to work with. I'm really proud of the relationship that we've been building with Apple Tree Arts. Matt Mariner now comes and does a drama class after school for my kids that they might not have access to if it wasn't in the building right after school. Tufts University's been phenomenal. We continue the tradition of participating in the Gap Junction program, as well as a cohort comes over and does a phenomenal STEAM project with fifth grade where they have to design wheelchairs for dachshunds. And it's just amazing that the kids, how engaged they are in the ideas that they can come up with. Stop and Shop, particularly in Grafton, has been phenomenal, helping our families in need at the holiday time. And the Citizens Bank there surprised me this year and pitched in and participated in making the holidays wonderful for about eight of our families. The Grafton Land Trust is great. They've given us two grants this year at the school. They also came this year and did a wonderful presentation on the Blackstone Valley watershed to our fifth grade. Again, parent and community volunteers are there for every activity. The Mass Safe Roots to School, we are still doing our Walking Wednesdays, and they are still providing workshops for our second graders on pedestrian safety. And it's great when we have the local and state government officials come and visit our building. Mr. McInerney's been in, Mr. Merudian, and they're just big shots, you know? And when the kids hear that they're a governor official, they feel like, you know, they are important people, but they're also very supportive of the school. So, starting at the upper-left, that group of young ladies are actually students, I believe. John Roy is an AP chemistry teacher at the high school, is that correct? Is that right? So they come, very, after they finish their AP exams, I guess they're ready to let loose, they like to come to the school and do chemistry and experiments with the, and physics experiments with the fourth grade. So that was at the very end of the year last June. That lovely lady in that top corner, top center, her name is Elaine Morganti. She is a retired teacher. She has been coming to volunteer at my school for the last two years doing math intervention with the kids. The kids love her. She's there once a week. They ask me next time, "When is Grandma Math coming?" She loves it when I say that. There is our school resource officer, Officer Alz. That's the biggest smile I think I've ever seen on that man's face, and that's probably the only reason why I put it up there, but he's at an all-school meeting doing winter safety for the children. That wonderful group of young adults down at the lower-right corner, that was, they were our special guests Friday morning at our March all-school meeting. Jim Scanlon, who's the AD at the high school, and I've made that a tradition now. We invite back seniors that are Millbury Street alum, who are not only excellent athletes, but excellent students. And it's probably the most favorite all-school meeting with our staff because they get to see their kids all grown up and to hear what their plans are. And the theme of it is that these young adults talk to our students about how our core values influence them through elementary school, that they learned at Millbury Street School, and how by carrying those values through high school, it's made them the success that they are today. It's very inspirational. And then that picture, as I move clockwise, that is a yoga class during Ed Camp. We had Ed Camp this year. Those kids are really in the zone. If you could see it better, eyes are closed, you can hear them humming. We couldn't have done Ed Camp without Lisa Rice, who spoke earlier. Her enthusiasm and organizational skills, but the amount of volunteers and community that pitched in was phenomenal. So are there any questions about, I know it's a lot of information, I know you have my school improvement plans in your packets, but does anyone have any questions about some of the action steps that we've implemented this year for our school improvement goals? Joanne, was that the first time you've done Ed Camp? This year was the first time. And was it the whole school, all the same time? We did. We had a primary Ed Camp day for two, three. And then we had an upper Ed Camp day the next day for four, five, six. We realized it was a lot to move 700 kids around, so we split them. That was my question. Yeah. Uh-huh, great. It's excellent. Thank you. Sure.
I just think it's, I love these presentations so much, and I think you guys are really walking the talk and being so creative and really thinking it through all the way. I love the community effort and connecting with everybody to get, to show how it's really, you know, takes the village, but to come in and work together. You know, I love the reset button. I'll probably use it tonight. And, but I also, Dr. Cokely, I wanted to thank you as well. Your name came up, I think, last time with Julie Flynn when she presented, and she talked about the math camp, or the-
Math Summit.
Summit, yeah. Sorry, better than a camp, sorry. Math Summit, and how, what a big help you've been. So we appreciate that so much, but I just, it was so wonderful to see all this, and I know we have more to go, but I just, I love it.
Thank you, thank you. So, working in conjunction with Steve Altshire, the North Street Elementary School principal, these are the goals. Don't let him know I spoiled his goal presentation for next year, but Steve and I do like to align our goals together. So next year, we've condensed to three goals. We've moved some things around. We've started off, because we're really going to focus again on social-emotional learning in our classrooms. This year, we did a lot of base work on, you know, growth mindset, social-emotional learning, relationships. learning, relationships. We did some work on trauma too, and how that can impact relationships in the classroom. But we're really going to start focusing on instruction, on building that social emotional component into the actual instructional piece of the classroom. We combined instruction and, and assessment and curriculum into one piece. That is our goal two. And then our last goal is providing a safe, innovative, and emotional, flexible, safe school environment for all learners. And I'm excited about that one because, again, it ties so nicely into the cell, and we really believe that the strength of any organization is the people that's in it, small or big. And I think that goal's going to fit nicely with the culture that we're trying to create at Millbury Street School. Any question on the goals for next year? Any comments? Suggestions? No? Okay.
I just don't know what it is, but I'm really glad that social emotional learning is still a goal. And I'm going to, I will look forward to the day when it is so integrated that it no longer is a goal, kind of like what we used to do with STEM, where it was kind of an add-on all the time, and then it becomes a part of everything.
What?
Same. And I know it is, I know it is, and I appreciate that it's a goal, but I think, you know, I'm glad we're moving towards where it's just going to be a part of our curriculum. It's just when teachers come up, it's no longer just academic. Social emotional is right there.
ASCD just came out with a new book. It's called All Learning is Social and Emotional Learning. Steve Olchar and I are going to use that for a lot of the crux for our training for staff next year, as well as we're going to do a second book study using that book for teachers. So now we're going to do our educational highlight. And this year, I felt very strongly that it was time to really brag a little bit about how fantastic the children are at Millbury Street School and how empathetic and caring they are. Mary and I have spent probably the last five years really supporting children that want to do a service learning project, whether they think of it themselves or it's a grade level. They are so proficient at coming to us now and proposing who they want to save next or what animal is endangered, or, you know, where they need help. And Mary and I are completely supportive of it. And we do make them do some homework. They have to do some research for us, they have to tell us why it's impactful, they have to find another adult in the building that's going to help support their cause, and then they have to come up with a realistic goal that they want to meet. It's not always just about putting coins out and collecting it. Sometimes it's just about educating other people in the building about these things. So I selected three of the many projects we do. I have to say that aside from our building, the Grafton High School kids have come down and worked with my children, invited them in to participate in their own service learning projects. We had two lovely young ladies come down and they worked with about 45 kids in the cafeteria, and together they tied 37 blankets for the Linus Project together to donate, and they invited my kids to do it. The children, just this week, I have a box of letters that another student at the high school is doing for their independent service project to send to veterans and to active military personnel, just as thanks and encouragement. Two young ladies have done an after-school art workshop for students at Millbury Street School as part of their independent service project. So like I said, it's, it's not only just what's happening at Millbury Street School, but it's how we serve the community. So tonight I have three quick, I'm sure, projects that are going to be shared. I picked them because one centers, is focal point is the school. And then the next one that's going to be shared extends into the Worcester community and our surrounding community of Grafton, and, you know, a little further. And then the last one is global. I thought it would be kind of nice to see that ripple effect that the students really do have here at Millbury Street School. So first, it's going to be Dr. Cokely, and she is going to be presenting with her group of girls that she'll be introducing their work on creating mindfulness boxes for the classrooms. So I'll let you introduce. So I think I have two representatives today. We thought maybe one more was going to be joining us, but that's okay. Come and sit next to me.
If you want to get some video and pictures from over here, you're more than welcome to. Plus, this is going out live, too.
So this does tie a little bit to the social emotional learning practices that we have been developing. So during PD days, we have taught teachers how to be more mindful and how to utilize strategies for themselves when they are involved in some very hectic situations where lots of things are coming at them, and to be able to create a calm sense of environment for their students. And so after doing that with our teachers, we, we talk a little bit about stepping out of the waterfall because so much of our lives in school were racing and we're in the, right in it. And so taking a step back to kind of look into what we're doing has really worked for teachers. So I reached out to a couple of girls to talk about how do we help students do the same? And we, you know, we had a couple of meetings before we started our project and decided what we would do, but we talked a little bit about two things that I think is affecting a lot of our students. Things that we worry about and things that get us worked up. So we sometimes worry about things happening in school, but we also worry about things that are happening out of school, and they come into the classroom. So we have to have kind of an avenue for people to acknowledge that, but then to also have a strategy for dealing with it. So, girls, do you want to take a minute to write or to read your parts? So Chloe, you want to start? This is Chloe Garo, and this is Audrey Murdock.
Okay, we wanted to help them refocus their thinking in a positive direction. They can open the box and pick an item that they like. Some of the things we have put in the boxes are journals, positive messages, fidgets, and tips.
We made 30 mindfulness boxes to be kept in each homeroom class. The boxes were presented during our monthly all-school meetings.
Okay. So we're going to share these with you, but, girls, did you want to, let's see, this is Audrey's awesome illustrations that she has here, but would you open your box and just maybe pick out one thing? And Chloe, you too, to share? And then we will also pass those around. So this was us presenting at an all-school meeting. And then this is just what it looks like. So what we talked about was, how do we put it into classrooms? So we kind of have these index cards that talk a little bit about what, how I use the box for students and why we use it. And then some suggested other activities that might not be in the box, but that students could try out in the classroom. So what's the one thing you chose?
I chose the journals that we wrote in.
And tell us a little more about it.
The journals are for all the kids in this class that, every box gets a journal, and the kids get to write how they feel and what works them up and what worries them in there.
Right. And so part of some of our work with each other, we talked about that we all feel those ways, and that it's kind of nice to know that other kids are feeling that way. So the journal is a good way to be able to read other people's reflections, right? Audrey?
I took out a fidget toy.
Okay. And why did you choose that?
Because you can play with it when you're worked up.
Yeah. So kind of to refocus, like you said in your statement, refocus your mind on things that you can kind of then get back to class, right? So the next part is, what's next for us? So what we'd like to do is, now that we've put these in classrooms, we'd like to do a survey to figure out what parts are working. And then maybe even offer an after-school workshop where students could create their own mindfulness box, maybe a mini mindfulness box, right?
Yeah.
Okay? You want to put those back in there? Maybe, people might have questions for you, but I'd like to have these around so people can look at those. Do we have any questions?
I do. You've been talking a lot, though. But I'll go first. I, first of all, I just want to say thank you, how, what wonderful people you are to think about others and to start early to learn how to manage anxiety or emotions. That's something that people need to do through their whole life. I have my own mindfulness box here at school committee that sometimes I need to refocus, and that you could do that at a younger age than I can, I think is remarkable. I was wondering what kind, I know you're going to do the survey, but what was the reaction from your classmates? How have you seen people using the boxes during school?
They were very excited and happy about them and ready to use them.
Some of the kids were using some of the materials when it was on, right?
Yeah. So we talked about this after we put them in classrooms, how some of the fidgets are exciting, so kids are play, everybody wants their hands on it.
Right.
And that as we do our part about educating, is we have to talk a little bit about why we're using those and what does work for us, right? Because we're, we were noticing some of those things, too.
Very distracting.
Yeah.
As I'm playing with slime.
And so the, the putty is probably the most well-liked, but, you know, a reality in schools too is that there's a lot of fidget use, so a lot of kids are looking to have a fidget. So we're trying to teach responsible use of fidgets. And so in our mind, anything under the table that you are using with your hands and not your eyes is a responsible use. So if your hands are busy, but you're focusing on the speaker or the work, that, that's more, a more responsible way. And so there are students who utilize the things in the boxes, and then other students who are really just trying to keep focused at their seats, right? Yeah.
I really liked the journal piece of it, to know you're not alone, or to be able to even express and understand, like, what works you up and to be able to put that into words is not something that everybody can do. And it's really important to be able to say what, what it does, so you can either work to figure it out or learn your common, common friends with it, so.
And I would agree that getting worked up just presenting today is probably a big one, right? So these girls have come a long way. They've presented quite a bit. When initially we talked, they didn't want any part of that. So this has been a really great thing for them. So I'd like to thank them.
I think you've done a fantastic job tonight presenting your creation. Thank you for sharing it with us. And everyone who's seeing this on TV right now are all looking at what you all had made at school for your fellow classmates. You should be very proud of yourselves, and we couldn't be happier that you were able to share this with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Wait, anybody want a picture? Parents?
Yeah.
Yes, you do.
Should we stand up there?
Yeah.
Should we stand up here?
If you wait one second, guys, one second. If you want to just wait a few minutes until everyone's done, we are going to have something special that we want to announce tonight for you all.
Everybody's, okay. Sorry. I got excited for the pictures.
So next I have second grade teacher Lori Walsh. She's going to present the pajama program that we've been doing at Millbury Street School. How many years now, Mrs. Walsh?
Six.
Six years going, so they are next.
Good evening. How are you all tonight?
Good.
Thank you. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
You guys excited? Okay. Thank you for having us. So I'm Lori Walsh. I have been running the pajama program at our school for six years now, and I'm going to let my students introduce this. We have Kendra Minor, a sixth grade student of mine, also student council president. She actually presented the pajama program to our all-school meeting back in November. I was out with surgery at the time, and I wasn't able to present it and introduce the program. So Kendra took over for me, presenting it to the whole school, and my students also presented, holding up the pajamas that had been donated so far. So it was a great introduction in November. And then we have Luca Petanella and Ava Snyder, also second grade students of mine currently, who are going to be talking a little bit about it as well. Okay? So Kendra, go ahead.
We are here to tell you about the pajama program. The pajama program is an organization that collects new pajamas to give to kids in need around the country. Some of these children may be living in shelters, be homeless, or be living in poverty. Many of these kids have never owned a pair of pajamas, and some of them don't even know what pajamas are. They go to bed in their day clothes, never feeling the comfort of a warm cozy pair of PJs and snuggling up with a good bedtime story.
Now, just to direct you to the pictures before we continue, these are some of the pictures that come off the video that I show my students and that I send out to all the teachers around the school to also introduce, introduce it to their students. The first from the top left says, "Thank you for the PJs. They're the first PJs I've ever owned, Jason." And I really stress that to my kids when we're talking about it, that, you know, you do food drives and things like that, and you never really think about the fact that some kids have never owned a pair of pajamas. They literally go to bed in their day clothes. And of course, we have kids and families in our own community that are affected by things like this. So they really kind of take that to heart and start to connect with that. And then a couple other cute pictures, the kids down the bottom left are from the Atlanta Reading Center. And my sister actually lives in Atlanta, so I look forward to next time I go. I want to go to the Reading Center and take a little bit more part in it, so I'm really excited about that. But you can see how excited the kids are when they get their pajamas and a little bit more, they'll get a book, which you'll hear about next. So Luca, go ahead.
In our classroom, we made posters about the pajama program to hang around, hang up around the school. And we talked about how we could spread the word around town. We knew that we all had a part in this pajama drive, and we could support the program by making posters, spreading the word, or donating new pajamas.
Nice job. So my students made the pajamas, as Luca said, and they went into the other second grade classrooms to explain the program to them. And then the student council helps explain the program and get, spread the word around the rest of the school as well, along with the posters that we've made and hung up around the school. And Ava?
The pajama program also partnered with Scholastic Book Company, which gives one book to each child that receives pajamas so that they will have their own pair, their own pajamas and their own bedtime story to read. With a new pair of pajamas and a new book, kids can feel safe and comfortable as they drift off to sleep.
So now, thank you, Ava. So this is the sixth year, as Mrs. Stockland said, and now we have collected 2,477 pajamas. It's so exciting. And the pictures you see up here in the top left, these are my current students, and they helped, again, this was shortly after my surgery. I wasn't able to package all these giant trash bags full of 600 some odd pajamas and put them in my car. So the kids all helped me drag them out to a woman who lives in Central Mass that runs the Central Mass chapter. She had a volunteer come collect them from me, from the school, so the kids all helped me drag the bags out to pack them. So it was really cool for them to be part of that. The top right is the amazing fourth grade team at Millbury Street Elementary School that every year since I've been doing this, they have worked together to come up with their own set of pajamas that they all wear. And it's, it's such a great sense of community, and it really gets the kids excited to see what they'll be wearing that year, too. So I'm jealous of, of their little group doing that. It's awesome. And then there's three more pictures down below of just my groups from over the years, the past few years of my class themselves with the pajamas that we have donated. So the woman that runs the Central Mass chapter has always assured me that the pajamas we collect do go to students or families in need right around our area, some being Grafton, some being Worcester County, but they do really service our own community, which is awesome. Every year, the kids that get these pajamas obviously grow, so by the following year need them again. So even though it's 2,477 kids or pajamas, we may have hit the same child five or six times by now that needs a new pair each year. So I do plan to continue this program every year. I think it's great for the school, and the kids really seem to enjoy it, and I think it's wonderful. So, do you have any questions for me or for us?
I mean, I remember when you started this, and it's nice to see it grow, and I like how they added the book portion with it, too. I know the kids love it because it's, they wear the pajamas to school that day.
Yes, yeah.
So it's evolved, and it's just amazing to see how much it's grown, so it's good to see. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, our pajama day is the last day of the drive. I forgot to mention that. Thank you. That's so exciting, too, for the kids. And the very first year, I did it back in 2013. I started with just the second grade. I got an email about it from Scholastic and was like, oh, maybe I'll start, maybe I'll try that. And talked to my students about it, and then talked to my grade level team, and they all seemed interested, so we did just grade two. And then I opened it up to the school the following year, and everyone was just so welcoming I got an email about it from Scholastic and was like, "Oh, maybe I'll start- maybe I'll try that." And talked to my students about it, and then talked to my grade-level team, and they all seemed interested. So we did just grade two. And then I opened it up to the school the following year, and everyone was just so welcoming to the idea and really excited about it. So it's been fun.
Do you have the name of the- if people miss the drive but want to donate on their own?
Oh, well, so they actually collect pajamas throughout the entire year. It's just obviously a bigger drive being the winter. But I can get that name to you again. Or even if you want to donate in the fall, I usually start every time around November. And then the end date is the middle of December. Because in order to partner with Scholastic, you have to have it in by Scholastic's date, just the numbers, and then they'll match the number of books with the number of pajamas. But you can donate pajamas any time of the year. It's just to match with the books, it has to be in by that time, in December, yeah. But I'll do it again next November, and feel free to stock up on clearance. That's what I've been doing every time I'm at Kohl's, so. Okay?
Is it a range of sizes? You go from like, from K through adult?
Yeah, from newborn to adult. And she said, actually, she's made a point every year of saying that from the Millbury Street Elementary School, she gets the most pajamas of this age range, from kids of second through sixth grade and older. They get a lot because they do partner with Carter's, and they've actually expanded to some Target and Bob's stores this year. But they get so much of the newborns and the toddlers because they're just cutesy, and that's what everyone buys at Carter's. They don't get as much of the school-aged children. So every year she counts on like 500 just from us. So that's really great. So to have that age, and some kids, you know, sixth, seventh, eighth grade even, they're adult size. So the whole span of sizes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So what'd you guys think? Did you like presenting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you like it and do it again?
You guys did awesome.
You guys did a great job tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. So the last service learning project we're going to share is of global proportions. I have three of my fifth grade teachers here and Nate Bee, and they are going to present Millbury Street School's impact on a school in Kenya.
Good evening, how you doing tonight? Pretty good.
So we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Katie Weskin, a fifth grade teacher.
Tracy Estefan, fifth grade.
I'm Nathan Benidue, a student.
Shelley Waller, fifth grade.
So we're here to present about kind of a service learning project that touches upon social-emotional learning as well, that kind of spawned from a book that we read or that we read every year as a read-aloud in our classes. It's connected to our Earth's Water Science Unit. So just a little background about that unit is we teach, oh, the Earth has so much water. Approximately 97% of the Earth is full of water. But then we really break it down for the students. Well, how much is saltwater? How much is glaciers? How much is groundwater? So what's really left for potable or drinking water? And that really kind of makes the students go, "Whoa." And so we talk about how we can conserve water. And then, so this is a great book that I think Tracy will explain a little bit.
So the book is connected, it's called Long Walked Water by Linda Park. And it is- it's fiction, but it's based on a true story. It takes place during the 1980s, during the Sudanese Civil War. And the story focuses on a boy named Salva Dut, who is- rebels come in, and he has to flee. And it's the story, his journey to thousands of miles to walk to refugee camps. And at the same time as that story is being told, it also flashes forward to early 2000s to a story of Naya, a 12-year-old girl. And Salva is a 10-year-old boy. So very age-appropriate in the sense of these are the ages of our students in our classrooms that are reading this book. And Naya is a girl who doesn't get to go to school. And it's her job to make a four-hour walk two times a day to get a bucket of water that is not potable. So it flips back and forth between those two stories. And in the end, the two stories combine. Salva Dut in a refugee camp, he has the opportunity to go to America. He's adopted by a family in New York. And he has this sense of giving back. So he is- he goes out into the community, gets money, and he goes back to Sudan to digs well- to dig wells for his people, as well as other tribes. And Salva is part of the Dinka tribe, and Naya is part of the Nuer tribe, and they, you know, longtime enemies. So he ends- the story ends with him digging a well for Naya and the Nuer tribe. So it's just that real nice life connection, real-world connection to what they're learning in science, to reading, and then, here you go, Nate.
Yes, so, so the students created a podcast to explain- sorry. As a result of our- wait, hold on.
It's okay. I think before that, we were going to say that.
The.
No, it's okay. This book, there was a lot of- we got sort of our notes messed up, sorry. There were a lot of opportunities to have really thoughtful, deep discussions with the students. Like, can you imagine if your life was like this? And what would you do if you had to walk this far? Throughout the book, they would get very fired up, like, "Well, what can we do? That's not fair." And always like, "Look, maybe we can go see Mrs. Stockland." Who, they all, you know, they wanted to do something. And by the end of the story, when Salva gave back, they were like, "We can do the same thing." Obviously, it's not that easy to- they talk about field trips to Africa, and, you know, some of that's way out of reach. But at the same time, I had gone to PD. It was a RISE workshop over a weekend, and I met Laura DeShane, who ran a fundraiser at the middle school for seventh grade for a school in Africa. So we asked the kids to brainstorm different ideas of what they would want to do. And then we sort of, we mentioned this fundraiser that the middle school was doing. And that was it, they were so excited. "Why don't we just do that? We can, you know, make a bigger impact." We didn't know how much money that the middle school had raised, but the kids were just, right away, like, "Let's just jump on board with that." So we decided to do.
A podcast. So, so we, sorry, we decided to do a coin war between all of the grades. And it was trying to collect coins and spare change to donate to children in Africa to buy mattresses, solar lamps, and water filters, most importantly, to make sure they have clean water. So we made a podcast to explain the purpose, background, and results of it. So one student from each fifth grade class participated in creating the podcast, which communicates our message. We actually have a clip from the podcast to play, and we are entering the podcast into the National Public Radio Student Podcast Challenge, which is open to fifth and 12th grade students.
I'll play a little piece of it.
Why you get that ready?
Do you drink dirty water? Can you imagine taking two trips to a pond every day to collect water? Could you walk four hours one way? What if I told right now, you are in danger?
You need to leave and run, and don't stop until you find safety.
You must leave without your family possessions orphaned.
Fifth graders at Millbury Street Elementary School in Grafton, Massachusetts, asked themselves these same questions as they read Long Walked Water by Linda Sue Park. This book can add to their Earth's Water Unit in science. After realizing similar conditions still exist today for peers in remote African villages, they felt like they needed to take action. And with me today, we have a few of the many students who help contribute to this fundraiser.
Sam Daniels.
James Woodbury.
Leila Clements.
Rashid Polery.
Brooke Willa.
Maddie Moran.
And me, Nathan Benidue.
Leave you with that cliffhanger.
So Nate, were you able to say how much money?
Yes, sorry. So we raised a little bit over $1,600 to donate to children in Africa, which we were very proud of.
Just coins.
In just coins, yeah.
So as teachers, we thought this was a really good connection, obviously, to global learning and making students more aware of what else is out there besides Grafton. So they kind of had these tenants of social-emotional learning, their self-awareness. Okay, we have all of this at our disposal. What can we do to help those who have none of this at their disposal? So, and then as Mrs. Stockland said, we really tried to empower the students and hear them and support what they want to do. So that's kind of how they touched upon self-awareness. It was really student-driven, because we've read this book several years now, and this was the first year where they kind of were like, "No, we need to do something. What are we going to do?"
So one of the other tenants about SEO is self-management. So the students came together to set a goal. How are they going to, you know, organize in raising money? And then creating collection cans for each of the homerooms. So that part is, you know, the self-managing part and getting the job done.
And with social awareness, I think it was really great for them to realize how the world they live in here was totally different than what's going on in Africa. And how it was nice to see them look at water differently. They have a whole different perspective on water in their homes. And now they, you know, they talk about not using water bottles and using, like, refilling water. So that's pretty cool to hear them talk about that.
So based on the empathy that they developed for the students in Africa throughout this process, they really came together and make a difference socially. So it's great to see 10 and 11-year-olds realize, "Hey, we can really do something" and kind of see, have a tangible impact on somebody else. So we know that there are pictures, I think it might be on the next slide, where the students are holding solar lights that have been purchased through this program. So it's just really building those relationships outside of themselves.
And responsible decision-making, understanding that there was a need for the help, and realizing, okay, this is what's needed. Now, what can we do? Then putting that plan into action. Having the students take it to, you know, the adults that can get it started, and then going on with that task.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do have one question, Nate. Great job tonight in presenting.
Thank you.
And the rest of you. Thank you for sharing that. But when you were doing the coin war, was that something that you yourself led and organized with the help of other students?
It was, it was all, it was really, so when, I'm in Mrs. Waller's homeroom. So when we were reading the read-aloud, we were thinking, you know, there has to be like some sort of way we can help. So we thought if we did a coin war with a reward as if the, with the most great- the grade that brings in the most amount of coins wins an extra recess. So we used that as, we used that as a motivation to get everyone.
Who won the recess?
Uh, fifth grade.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say more to Mrs. Stockland and to everyone in Millbury Street. But I'd like to see everything that you're doing with just the act, like, just how active everyone's being, from whether it's, you know, local, like what Audrey and Chloe and, you know, Mrs. Walsh and then to the fifth grade. It's just great to see that it goes everywhere. It's not local, and then it goes, it's local, it's global, it's the community. They're just becoming active learners and community members, which is just great to see from our students, so thank you.
And I'd just like to say, too, that this was going on along with the pajama drive, and then another second-grade teacher was collecting backpacks and toiletries. And, you know, Mrs. Stockland said, "Make a point. You don't have to do it for everything, just pick one." But I think every service project at that time felt so grateful for the amount that was contributed. I think, how many backpacks?
I think we did over 75.
Yeah, so to have all three at once, and no one was neglected at all, really says a lot about our community.
I just, I think you touched on it a little bit, but I think it's important to say how wonderful your students have, to have adults that listen and help them. So everybody, when you said that, we're going to go tell Mrs. Stockland, like, knowing that you had adults that could help, and then adults that actually followed through and helped, I think it says so much about your community and how lucky we are to have you. So thank you all so much. And I think the future is very bright with all of you, so appreciate it. Thank you. Nate, you did a great job.
Thank you.
And before everyone leaves, we have a special certificate for everyone. So if I can call up all the students, Abigail, Chloe, Audrey, Ava, Luca, Kendra, and Nate. If you guys want to just separate over here, we'll just take a nice picture of all of us right over here.
Wait, don't get me excited, then, like.
I got excited.
I'm all excited. It's way too many people. I don't look good in photos. Let's go, say we go behind, stand in the corners.
Beautiful, thank you. Here?
Whoa.
I think they got us covered.
Do you guys want us in?
I'm not.
How was it about opening this and then still did it and still didn't get the news I wanted?
That's fair.
I don't know what I'm saying.
Oh, my God, I love this. This day has been.
So if you start to see me sweating, it's because I'm making stuff up.
Oh, my God, I'll just. Oh, sure. I'll make a noise or something, I'll drop stuff.
Hey, guys, we're just gonna wait for a few people to clear out of the room here, and then we'll get right to the high school's presentation on G-Term. I want to personally thank the high school team who's coming here to present tonight on G-Term for waiting and watching that last presentation. Thank you for your patience tonight.
Great to see all of those young people attending.
Ready, no, take this chair, and I'm going to take your chair.
Good evening, how was everyone tonight? Really good, thank you. Good. Evening, everyone. We're pleased to be here tonight to talk about a new study opportunity of students and staff. But first, I want everybody to introduce themselves and get into our presentation.
I'm Megan Wager, I'm in grade 10.
I'm Wesley Chu, I'm in grade 10 also.
Katie Black, I'm an English teacher.
Amanda Ren, I'm also an English teacher.
Tyler Conca, I'm a junior.
So again, thank you for having us here tonight. This is a program that developed a couple of years ago. We started our PLCs at the high school, and the PLC was on assessment. And from there, we talked about sharing different practices of assessment. But from that, we started to talk about what we're doing at the end of the school year and trying to make learning more alive for both staff and for students at that time of the year. So this is that opportunity we're going to talk to you about tonight. So we had the faculty input on it, but also part of our school council goals has been for the last couple of years about student voice. And where this faculty had developed some courses, the idea was that students would be able to go in and vote for their courses that they'd like to see at the high school. So that's really how we developed this process moving forward. I've shared out with the community numerous times the course catalog. So you have that through previous emails that I've, again, shared out to everyone. But we'll talk a little bit about those courses, but also our process tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the students and the faculty to talk.
All right, so what G-Term is, is it's an authentic learning opportunity for staff, community, and students to participate in together. And it is a four-day experience. There are three days of projects, community work, experiences. And then there's one day in which we invite the community in, and we share what we learned, or we share our experiences. Everyone is involved, so all of the paraprofessionals, all of the teachers, people in the community, every student. So everyone has been involved in the process of coming up with these ideas, and everyone will be involved in actually going through G-Term. Well, except for seniors.
So here we have a list of student benefits, and as Katie said, it's authentic experiential learning. So we have experiences ranging from service projects to backpacking and getting outside, to working in shelters with animals. So really, it was students' opportunity to sort of voice their interests and have an authentic learning experience at the end of the year, when at times, you know, summer is coming, and we want those students to stay as invested for us for the whole year. So this is a great opportunity to do that. Social-emotional learning, we've heard a lot of great stuff coming from the elementary schools and all of the great things that they're doing. And G-Term is another opportunity at the high school level to do, to engage in social-emotional learning. at the high school level to do, to engage in social emotional learning. It's a low-stakes learning environment, so it's learning for learning sake and choosing things that students are interested in and investing in it because it's something they're enthusiastic about that they've chosen. When students signed up, they had, they registered for three courses that they were most interested in and were happy to say that every student got one of their choices as the G-Term that they're enrolled in for the sup, this spring. It gives a mental break and access to new subjects, an exposure to a college-like atmosphere, a lot of freedom to explore these things that they're interested in. And it gives them again, voice and choice. Students got to voice their interests in what programs they would like to see running and we tailored many of our experiences to what the students were saying. And of course, being in high school, we have all of our social media representation. So you can follow us at Twitter at @GTermG, and Instagram, @GTerm2019, and Facebook. Do you guys use Facebook?
No, but the parents.
Parents might want a window into. So already, there's been some activity on Twitter and Instagram, just sort of broadcasting what we're doing with students. Already, we've had our first G-Term meetings. All students have been placed into their choices and they've already met with teachers. So it's, it's a process, it's underway and it's really exciting.
All right, before this meeting, some of the students visited the teachers at Grafton High School and asked them to share a little bit about their program and what it's about. And this is that.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, I'm Diane Rassikott. I'm the Family and Consumer Science teacher here at Grafton High School. I'm very excited that we will be offering the serve safe food handling training this year during G-Term.
Hi, I'm Mary Curran and my G-Term is Muslim dogs.
Hey guys, I'm David Del Chapo. My G-Term this year is hashtag get outside. It's all about variety and balance and mutual activities.
Hi, my name is Mr. McNed and my G-Term offering is bigger, faster, stronger, myself and Mr. Foley will be doing this. Exercise slash nutrition-based course for G-Term. The goal of the activity is to increase the students' understanding of the importance of strength and conditioning for athletics, the importance of nutritional balance and good food choices for peak athletic performance.
My main thing is, I just love being outside, but in particular, the kayak trip down the Blackstone River is something that speaks to me personally. I love kayaking and it's what I do in a lot of my free time, especially in the summers. So I think that one would be great. We're also gonna do a mountain hike, which is gonna be great, and a beach trip, which I think most people are really looking forward to.
We are doing riding activities. We'll be, we have some speakers who can talk about dog behavior, things of that nature, biology. We're also going to bring in a canine unit from the Oxford Police Department to do a demonstration. We will be making items to donate to local animal shelters and then we'll be visiting some of those shelters to do some volunteer work, cleaning up, taking the dogs for walks, et cetera.
We will also be providing some food safety training to the other groups who will be using the culinary lab, such as the food is a necessity competition and also the cupcake wars. And we hope to also act as their judges too.
I think G-Term is always really valuable to the school. I think it's a great way for students and staff to get to know each other outside of the traditional classroom setting. I think it's also a great opportunity for students and staff to work on things that they truly enjoy. I think G-Term's really valuable because it's gonna allow us to expand our community outreach. We're gonna be getting involved with new kids. We don't always have in our classrooms. We'll make different types of bonds, I think, and rapport between teachers and students and other staff members, as well as within the community here, as we leave kind of our home campus and branch out to explore other learning opportunities all around us.
I think the G-Term allows students to, one, apply some things that we teach them. We often talk about in the real world, you know, you have to work with different people and things of that nature. So it really allows for that opportunity for students to go out in the community and work together, collaborate, you know, things that we try to teach them at school to be able to do. It also allows that opportunity for students to explore other interests that maybe don't fit into the normal curriculum. It allows them to really explore those things that they have interest in.
I'm very excited about G-Term. I think it's gonna be an incredible experience for the students to be able to learn outside of the classroom and to apply what they have learned even in the classroom to career opportunities and also to everyday living.
So, we have our G-Term timeline. These are events that have like already happened. We have the steering committee visited via Westwood High. Then we had, December nineteenth was a student presentation and survey. Before February break, the students shopped and registered the G-Term options with three choices they wanted. And then on March first, there was a forty-five minute extended block for teachers and students to prep for their G-Term.
So going forward on April tenth, there's gonna be an extended block for teachers and students to prep for G-Term projects. On May second, there's gonna be a twenty-five minute or like a regular extended block for teachers and students to prep for G-Term again. And then Friday, June seventh is G-Term Day Two. Monday, June tenth is G-Term Day Three. And then Tuesday, June eleventh is G-Term Day, oh, sorry. No, June tenth is Day Two and June eleventh is G-Term Day Three. And then on Wednesday, June twelve, it's the G-Term Celebration Day.
I think I'd like to have the students maybe just talk about the G-Term as far as what they hope to gain from that experience.
So for this year's G-Term, for my project, I'm working with Mr. Dunn at the high school. He's a history teacher. And we're gonna be studying different historical events and then watching movies that correlate with them. So we'll talk about the Civil War and then watching Glory and talking about the accuracy of the movies versus the actual event that happened.
Both me and Megan are in the Muslim Dogs G-Term for the first day. When we have the presenters coming into the campus, we have the Oxford Canine Officers, a dog trainer to discuss the behavior, and then we'll be making the toys for the shelters we're gonna visit for the next two days.
And then basically, what Wes said is, we're going to different shelters and we're gonna help them do different tasks too.
And the pictures that are up on there is our first G-Term meeting that the teachers had with their students. Again, the students mentioned that we will have additional meetings to plan for that, again, with the culmination that the twelfth of June, that we have a community celebration similar to what you've seen with our Arts Fair or the Technology Fair. We're gonna invite the community in to listen to the students about their project, their experiences, et cetera. So with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
No, I'm excited to see it all come together when it, you know, then in June. Does each person just get one choice and it goes for three days? Or do they get three choices that they get to participate in?
So, as of right now, when students registered for their G-Term, they chose their three top choices. And the way that we facilitated it, at least for this year, is everyone is in one program for, for three days, for the four days.
We did look at models that have half-day programs where you go to different things. I think since this is our first time, scheduling is gonna be a real challenge. So we're, you know, one step at a time. But I think that's definitely a possibility of something. We also talked about at one time, maybe doing like a mid-year type thing, maybe shorter, that maybe that's a possibility where they do a half-day, they move things around.
That would also be nice if it can fit so that seniors can participate, if they're, especially if they're freshmen now.
I feel like I wanna ask Tyler like a super hard question, but. What the reaction has been from the community, since this is such a wonderful shift. But it's a scary change, I bet, for some. So what has the feedback been?
Have you guys talked to your parents about it?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, they're like.
A lot of people don't understand.
Yeah, they were, yeah, they were generally like kinda confused and like I did have to like talk to them a lot about it. But then I think they're kinda interested to see like how I'll go through it and then like with everyone else they know and like different experiences with different like courses.
We didn't talk a little bit about the presentation at the end, which I think is such a huge piece, which I think would be difficult to do if you were doing a bunch of different. So being able to be in that, like, three days and then the presentation is, is a large part, right? So you're gonna learn how to do a presentation in front of people and to put different research together. Are you doing that solo or is it with your whole group?
It's within the group. So, I know with my particular project, we're gonna be off-campus. So we'll return to campus on that fourth day. So we'll be putting the stuff together as we go along and fingers crossed that it all comes together. But we'll be outside in the woods, so it'll be difficult for us to do anything like that.
What are some of the other ones that are going off-campus that you haven't mentioned yet?
There's a really cool one called Taste of Freedom. And so they're doing the Freedom Trail in Boston and they're going to different restaurants and talking about different cultures and food and visiting different places in Boston.
As well as navigating public transport.
Yeah, yeah, which.
Very good.
Life skill. Life skill, for sure.
That was actually my question, was some of the transportation, just an awful school committee member question, but.
That's a, that's a gym question.
Are we getting buses? Are people driving?
So, ask the faculty to let us know what they need for funding in terms of transportation and also supplies. So we're gathering all that information right now. We do have some funds set aside internally. I'm meeting with the local booster group. It's gonna possibly help us out as well. So there, I've met with Jerry numerous times talking about that next step and then it's getting in touch with AA Transportation and then figuring out the logistics from there.
I think you make a really good point that navigating public transportation is a life skill and not just for the seniors. Well, I guess they don't get to do it anyway, but not just for the older kids.
I think that's the beautiful thing is that these, these programs have so many learning opportunities embedded that might actually not even be like the actual project, like the Freedom Trail, walking the Freedom Trail, but also navigating the transport. With, with my group, I'm with Dave Del Chapo and the kayaking and just that idea of some of these students, after we go through water safety training, they're going to be learning how to kayak for the first time. And that frustration of when you see someone who's been doing this for three years and they're just like, hey, this is awesome and you're struggling to stay straight and just having that grit and that resilience to sort of turn it around. So I mean, the programs themselves are awesome and also those sort of soft skills that are embedded are really gonna be, I think, a great resource for the students.
I have to say, I also think you guys, this is like the most brilliant display of making lemonade when you've got lemons, right? Because nobody wants to be in school.
Who wants to be doing?
June fourteenth.
Right. Make it something positive. I think it's brilliant.
I will say that the trip that we took to Westwood High School was valuable. Just hearing from the students, hearing from the faculty, the administration about the process they went through. They just finished off their first year. We spoke to the principal of Concord High School, numerous other high schools in the state that are doing similar things to this. So, not breaking new ground here, but listening to what other people have gone through, their transition from year one to year two. And obviously, I think we would make some changes as we go along, but we're excited about it. Again, hearing some of the things that Westwood went through, we're going through similar things right now in terms of logistics and things of that sort.
I also wanna mention, as far as like those skills that the kids are picking up on, in talking to them, you know, just because like I've been involved in the process, so I've been talking to my kids about it as I go to these different things. And I said, guys, you know what? It might be a disaster, but we're gonna figure it out and you're gonna help us. And that's the thing. I mean, like, they recognize us as human beings, trying to do something new for them, trying to take a risk. And I think it's like the best lesson they can possibly see is that we're trying something new, we don't know how it's gonna go, and, you know, we're just gonna stay positive about it and we're gonna make sure that we do all the things that we need to do and, you know, and I think that kids often get so anxious and so nervous about trying new things. If they see adults trying new stuff and going out of their comfort zone, I think it gives them license to, to follow the lead.
But I also think it helps them come to know you as people. It humanizes you. You're not really just a teacher. You're a person who kayaks or you cook. I love everything about it. I think it's a fantastic way to build relationships with kids.
Yeah, I think Mr. Del Chapo said it in the video too about how there, he's gonna make connections with people. So then next year, you'll have one other person that you can go to if something's going on, somebody that you've been through a lot with. And I think that's so important. We probably didn't, we went into questions right away, but I, I think this is fantastic. I'm so excited about it. I of course want people to come back after so we can hear everything. I'm so proud of this. I think it's amazing. And I think it's gonna be such a great learning experience and, and fun and so much. I think it's fantastic, just in case my logistics questions.
I'd be interested to watch you guys in real time tell the story throughout the day, you know, on social media when, when it's appropriate, obviously, you know. But I think that'd be great for the, even the community itself to see, you know, how the results are, you know, unfolding in real time. And, you know, what were the struggles and how did you overcome those struggles? And how did the students and the teacher get together and, and make it work? I think that's, I think the community would really see that and reflect on, you know, you guys taking this, you know, this leap into this program. And I know you're, you're, you're not covering new ground. You, you've kinda modeled it after the Westwood, correct? Yeah, Westwood High. But it, I think it's exciting for Grafton to see that. I think it's great.
I love it. And Katie, you can always steal one of the like reset.
Yes.
I was thinking that, but I love the rest-taking. And do you think, or did some of the schools do it around midterm time too? Like where they did it kinda mid-year or winter term or like?
Yeah, so it's actually, it's, we took G-Term, we made G-Term out of J-Term. Yeah. And some schools do the, the issue with the January is that it limits us so much about where, things that we can do. Cause we saw, what was it? Was it in Florida? I don't know, some warm place. They talked about all the cool things they could do in January and like, you know, I love winter, but most people don't.
Thank you.
Anything else, guys? Do you need anything from us? Any support from us that you can think of? Please let us know.
Come to the fourth day.
Yes.
I like that idea.
And you know what it is, you were talking about it, it really does model a, of colleges too, which is so important. I actually had a college, we did J-Term where you picked one and you studied for the month. And it was very, it was intense every day and very similar to this. And different things. People don't, I think sometimes outside, people don't understand like the benefits of learning, you know, what, what kayaking does or cooking or playing with, you know, all those things. Just cause it doesn't necessarily come from a book or something that you did back in your day, doesn't mean that it's not a great learning experience, so.
I think one goal we have for next year is to definitely bring the community into the teaching part of it. There's a lot of unique things that people do in our community in Grafton. And I think if we could have them be part, we have one parent that's actually doing a filmmaking course this year. We hope to expand on that next year. So that'll be, I think, once the word gets out about it, and that's what we've heard from other schools, after year one, where we get out and then more people are looking to get involved in it. And I think that's our number one goal for the future.
Thank you guys so much.
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it.
Tyler, do you wanna picture with Peter, me, Mr. Carlson?
I'll get, I'll get you guys later.
He actually wants a certificate.
He wants a certificate.
Real quick, ladies and gentlemen, I know there's some people here that would like to see a certain part of our agenda. If you would like to know, can you get the committee's permission to take policy out of order tonight and take that upon next? If it's an agreement or do you wanna wait? It's your pleasure.
Earlier, that's mine.
Melissa, is that fine with you?
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna take out of order tonight and then we will follow, we'll go back to general business and follow up with the FY20 budget vote tonight. So we're gonna take Section 10 policy subcommittee materials. So, and also with the permission of the committee, I had a member of the committee who emailed in advance who would like to just give a brief statement before we get into deliberations on policy JEB. So if the committee has any objections, if not, I'll have Kristy come up and give a statement. All right, Kristy?
I would like my picture taken later.
Certificate would be nice too.
Start charging. I'm just kidding.
As you know, I'm Kristy Kilbuzinski. I'm here on behalf of the citizens of Grafton that are petitioning the school committee for exemption policy to be made to the Jeb. A month ago, I provided the school committee with extensive material regarding Jeb policy. This included a small sampling of schools in Massachusetts that allow for exemptions. There are numerous other schools, districts that allow for exemptions but were not included in the book. I've since spoken with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. and they feel strongly that it is necessary to leave room in the Jeb policy for exemptions to be made because it's valuable to place students appropriately. This is why they recommend in their reference manual to allow for exemptions to be made at the school's discretion. It's up to the school committee to keep all of our policies up to date, and the Every Student Succeeds Act was passed into federal law in December of two thousand fifteen and has implemented strategies for using Title II Part A funds. One of the strategies specifically includes using the funds for early entrance into kindergarten. By suggesting that funds be used for early entrance into kindergarten, the act implies that there are cases when early entrance into kindergarten will occur. Our policy currently leaves no room for this to happen and proves to be an antiquated policy. I had the pleasure of attending the subcommittee meeting last week regarding this policy, and I am aware of the concerns of Dr. Cummings, uh, about implementing any changes to Jeb one due to the possibility of an increase in kindergarten admissions. It's true, I don't know how many additional kindergarten applicants you would receive, and of those applicants, how many children would actually qualify based on the suggested guidelines. Rather than speculating, the school committee could reach out to the other districts with similar policies, gather concrete data. The policy that I'm proposing is based off of Mendon Upton, and as we've heard from Ms. Cohen, as she's mentioned numerous times, this has been effect there for nu, for many years, and only one child has used it. Not one per year, one in total. Additionally, it's important to remember that if a child is admitted to kindergarten a year early, that they are not going to be attending the following year. Therefore, if all things remain equal, the average enrollment across multiple years does not change. In two thousand eighteen, the school committee ruled to open up school choice to include kindergarten. According to the report from Dr. Cummings, it shows that six additional students were able to enter the Grafton kindergarten from other school districts. If we can provide the opportunity to students outside the district to attend kindergarten, then why can't we provide it for the qualified students within our own district? I am again requesting that the school committee please consider the citizens of Grafton and allow for exemptions to be made based on stringent requirements. Don't let Grafton's Jeb policy be out of date with current guidelines of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and with the Every Child Succeeds Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Appreciate that. Okay. All right, so let's, uh, open up, uh, policy J-E-B. I know the.
I'd like to open up policy G-C-O-A and go in order of our agenda, please, Peter.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to start in the order of our.
You have to understand, I'm just looking at policy subcommittee materials, so I'll take your advisement under consideration. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, um, G-C-O-A Evaluation of Instructional Staff. This is a second reading. Um, it was just cleaning up new language, so you should have seen the first reading last time. Looking for a second reading on this.
I make a motion to have section, Section G personnel, G-C-O-A Evaluation of Instructional Staff, um, as a second reading. Uh, I don't know, sorry, if people have questions, but.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All those in favor? The motion carried.
All right, and the next one, G-D-E-A. This is the second reading. If you recall, um, we had a question originally about, um, every, about, um, if more than one candidate is considered to have equal qualifications, qualifications seniority will become a determinant. And we had some questions about what exactly does that mean, seniority, how do we know everybody's equal? And this is non-professional, non-union, uh, we didn't have a contract that we needed to, um, worry about, so the pol, policy subcommittee is recommending we just take that out, and that we just leave in every employee shall have equal opportunity to apply for any vacancy, and we'll leave it up to the hiring manager to decide who is most qualified, and that seniority doesn't necessarily need to play into it, and that the best candidate can get the job. So Jen, I don't want to call you out, but I know you were the one concerned.
No, when I read it, I.
Do you feel better about that?
Yes. I think because, only because of board of qualifications, some of it is not quantifiable.
Yeah, no, and we thought about that too. In some ways, you don't always get the best person for the job, and if they are, so. Yeah, so, um, cause I know you weren't here when we had the first discussion on it, so.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion for Section G personnel, G-D-E-A, non-professional, non-union personnel job vacancies, um, as a second reading.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All those in favor? Clear motion carried unanimously.
All right, and next, so we have G-E-B-A one, and I do appreciate all of the input from the community. And in this case, uh, the policy subcommittee is still recommending that we do not make a change to the policy. Um, we have, I have reached out to my colleagues on the Massachusetts School Committee. Um, I talked to the same person that Kristy talked to, and her answer was, was a little bit different on just that policy on their end was also kind of, um, I don't want to get into a he, I shouldn't have brought that up, but he said, she said, but I did reach out to, um, R. Listserve and talk to, uh, several different school committees, and there it was all over the map. There isn't a great solution, so when that comes to it, I really feel strongly about reaching out to, um, our administration. Um, we met with the kindergarten teachers, we met with, uh, Dr. Cummings, and they are recommending that they don't feel comfortable with having, um, they don't feel like they have the right data. They don't have the resources to evaluate, they don't have the, the, um, time, and that they're very concerned about what this does. Dr. Cummings has received multiple calls, uh, I'm not sure what it's up to, from members interested in this. So we're gonna be now pulling away our teachers and their time to evaluate kids. Um, I know there's research saying if you bring them in early, that they'll thrive. There's just as much research out there saying that you should hold your kid out, so, I mean, as we know, every kid is different. I'd love that we can make an exception on everybody's readiness. Um, but because we can't, and we are a district that has minimal resources, we need to have a, a date, and I, I don't, I think I speak for the subcommittee when we recommend no changes on this. We are trying very hard to kind of think a little bit on how to make this through, and we came up with what we think is a compromise, which is on J-E-B two for grade one. Who kind of came up on this, um, was learning if somebody comes out, uh, drafted, if they're in another district and they moved, and they had, the other district had a later start time, that they could come in later, even if they weren't a Grafton resident. So I thought, well, why are we not doing the Grafton residents the same? Um, and Dr. Cummings and the first, and the kinder, the principals and, uh, NGF and self-Grafton really felt strongly that they had, for first grade, they would have more data, they'd have more time, and they would be able to evaluate an incoming first grader much better than an incoming kindergartner. And just to address the school choice, um, I think that was, there was a new policy last year. We do get funding for that. I hate that that's an answer, but we get paid to have the kids come, and I think in a way, and we also have the opportunity to not enroll anybody. We can look at kindergarten, or we can look at numbers, and we could say, nope, we're not opening up for kindergarten. It's not a done deal every year. We're concerned about numbers. Um, the only people I've actually heard from about this was, we got a great letter from a community member who listened and, and was very concerned about, um, having to add in the resources. So, um, as our subcommittee, we are recommending, uh, to leave our policy the same, and we will ask for a first reading about the grade one policy, which can also be messy. Uh, you know, I worry about your kid misses the evaluation by a point, you know, there's always that gray area. We see parents are advocate for their kids, and that's wonderful. We see it in kindergarten, we see it all the way up to college now, where parents are kind of trying to fuck the system a little bit. So I, um, wanna work that out and what that means. Um, I don't want our principals and our administration having to spend a lot of time on kids that aren't in the district. So that is our recommendation.
Does anyone have any questions on J-E-B dash one before we take up the subcommittee's requests on our first reading on J-E-B dash two?
Well, do you want to make a motion? Because usually you.
Well, it's kind of two, so we don't need a motion, um, to not change the policy. So, I mean, there's three of you. If you guys don't, you know, if somebody feels super strongly, I would then recommend that I'm gonna turn it over.
Yeah.
For the rest of the committee to, to figure it out, because we have spent quite a bit of time. We have done our research, we have listened, we have met several times, we have discussed it, and, uh, I feel like we're making the right thing for our district. And it's, I'll tell you, it's hard. I don't like to say no, I don't like to be the bad guy. I like to think of every kid, and sometimes we have to, uh, think about the district as a whole. And that's where I'm coming from. I mean, I don't, I didn't.
You're doing great.
I always speak for the whole subcommittee, but.
I'll try and if I disagree, you know that, so, no, I think you represented our conversations really well.
Anybody else?
And I'm, I'm comfortable with our, um, what we're proposing for first grade in regard to kindergarten, keeping it right now, and what, the one thing that's kind of great about the policies is that they do get reviewed, um, every year or within, as best as we're able to get through them, but they, it's something that, um, different things get evaluated, and new information comes forward on, on all of them. Um, but right with the information we have now, and we feel pretty strongly, um, based off the, after all of our research to keep it the same right now.
So I think, you know, that's great. Everybody's done a lot of research, um, on both sides, and you're always gonna have data that's interpreted differently. There's a couple of things that I'd point out. Failure, uh, to meet the above conditions will suffice to exclude does not mean must exclude. So in the policy, there's a loophole.
Which policy? Sorry.
This is the existing policy. Jeb one. So it says, failure to meet the above conditions will suffice. So that would read as you may, but not you must. So what, to my reading, that's a you may, not you must, therefore, there's some leeway in it already, as it exists. I, I do not agree with having the stringent, it's this day, therefore. I think you need something more like a couple of standard deviations on the, the side of, if, if a kid is a couple of standard deviations beyond what you would expect for kindergarten entry, um, I don't think you're doing right by that kid not to let them in. Um, I think we're just gonna have to disagree on that, and, and, uh, I don't think that saying that, uh, kids coming in for kindergarten because somebody else pays for them. People who live here are already paying taxes. They already live here, so.
And they get to go to kindergarten.
Right.
They're not denied going to kindergarten, and they get to go when they're five.
Right, but I think that there's a logical inconsistency to saying, but then we wouldn't be able to allow in those six paying kids.
But those kids are five. They mean, we're not letting in kids that don't meet the requirements for school choice.
And they're also not Grafton citizens, and they're not paying Grafton taxes. The amount that they pay really doesn't, we, you know, we, we know that it, it really doesn't, uh, meet the same as paying Grafton taxes. Um, so I would say that, uh, viewing, you know, what you had said, Maureen, I agree with you. It's unlikely that this is, yeah, I, I don't think that it should just be a, somebody wants to send their child early, and, you know, that's, it, it really should be for a child who's extraordinary, and I would hate to. I don't think it is wise to make extraordinarily hard and fast decisions and say it can never, there can never be a, a change to that. Um, uh, that we're just, we're gonna make this line and that's it. I mean, that's not how biology works. It, it, it just isn't. There's a continuum, so there's always gonna be a child that doesn't fit into the box. I don't think it's gonna happen very often, but I think that if it does, we shouldn't have boxed ourselves in to something as hard and fast. And I would look at that sentence, um, I, in my mind, the way I read it. Sufficing to exclude doesn't mean that you must exclude. So.
If I may say, Melissa, I think that that paragraph refers to Sections A, B, and C. Uh, whereas the first paragraph of that policy clearly defines eligibility by date and date alone. Um, and that being said, there's the following conditions in addition to those dates that you have to have. So if failure to provide a, a certified birth certificate, let's say the child comes from out of the country and there's just no birth certificate. You know, I think those conditions, saying should be met, I think gives clear indication that if there is no legal birth certificate for that enrollment of that child, that that policy, the way that M.A.S.C. is given boilerplate language, allows for that condition. I'll give an example, if we had a disaster like Puerto Rico again, and we had to take a sudden influx of students, and they have no records, right? So we wouldn't say necessarily no, we would have to figure out some other way to validate the date, right? So I think that that, uh, if you had put, uh, you know, these conditions must, therefore, you would be excluding those extreme circumstances where people who couldn't produce a certificate or participation in kindergarten entry screening, so let's say a kid misses that and they move into district, uh, the second week of September, uh, or, and they met the eligibility of the date. So I think that, uh, what you're saying, I think only applies to those three, um, letters, A, B, and C, but not to that first paragraph. I, I've read that a couple of times, and I'm like, I.
I mean, I agree with you that that's the intent, but that's not what it says. I don't think.
Okay.
E, even though that's clearly the intent, and it's a good intent to say that, you know, as you said, the word disaster.
Right, and I use that as an extreme, just to prove my point.
But I, I would still, my, my, uh, recommendation, and I have a feeling I disagree with everyone here, would be that we don't make it so hard and fast that it can never be changed. That there's no, that there's no exception. I would make it difficult, um, and I would put all of the onus on the parent, not on the teachers. There should be no extra expenditure on the part of the school systems to determine kindergarten readiness.
One problem with that is that it only, those parents that can afford to have that testing or to advocate, brings in that inequity that we try to avoid as well, if you do that, you know, so. I'm not comfortable with that.
The child still gets, it's not denying a child to go to kindergarten, it's denying a child to go before the date. So they get to go to kindergarten and experience everything in Grafton. I think this is, I term this as an early education problem. This is a, we don't have free, uh, pre, preschool, um, coming into kindergarten, and we are in public school and we start at age five. And if it's the one, then you have the other, and it's tricky, and I've gone through your arguments several times, and I talked it over with the experts, cause I'm, you know, not an expert here on any of this. I just have to do my research and do my best on our recommendations, and they are saying, we don't feel comfortable. To me, those policies are taking the easy way out. They're kicking it to the root can, and we're hearing from our administrators that this isn't what they want. And in this case, I'm gonna go with them because they are the experts. So that is why, at least for me, why I am saying no to this. So, you know, Peter and Jen, cause you guys can, you know.
So I kind of, so I understand where, where Melissa's coming from, where I think it'd be nice to have like another option. I just don't know if we can have something in place for this coming September. Uh, but I do like the idea of at, at least updating it for the first graders and seeing how that, I know that's next policy, but seeing how that goes. And over time, if the teachers have a policy, because they're gonna have to come up with something for first graders, and they feel comfortable with that, then it could eventually get brought down to kindergarten if they feel comfortable with that. And I respect that you talked to M.I.C., I respect that you talked to, um, administrators and the kindergarten teachers, and just get their take on how they feel would be done. So I don't think, I like the idea of it being closed out, but as far as the timeline, I think it should stay as.
Any further discussion, or any, wanna make a movement on it? If not, then we'll go on to, uh, J-E-B dash two. If you have any more comments or questions on J-E-B dash one, so, uh, based on the subcommittee's recommendation as a first reading with the amended changes, um, is there a motion on the floor?
Which one? For amended changes to what?
J-E-B two. So we made some recommendations. This is a first reading, so if you have concerns or questions.
Oh, so J-E-B one stays.
Go back and refine, and we still, and I have concerns and questions myself about this, on, on what does completed kindergarten mean? Is it private? Is it a homeschool? What does all of that mean? So that's stuff that we have to work out, I think.
So can you, can you walk us through what this, I mean, you just, a little bit more what you were just talking about? So this is to where it, where you have this student who does not meet Grafton's grade one entrance, so now this is going to refer to Grafton as well as outside of Grafton?
No.
That's.
Well, I guess shouldn't, so that's a good, a point. So this is, so typically, this was the same policy as kindergarten, so we start kindergarten when you're. So we start kindergarten when you're five, you start kindergarten when you're six. However, if you move to Grafton and say you went, I think Worcester's is, is December. So let's say I went to Worcester, I was a kindergartner and I started kindergarten when I was four, when I was five in December. But I get to Grafton and we start first grade and I've completed a kindergarten, but I moved to Grafton now. I completed a kindergarten in, in Worcester, so I can get bumped into first grade in Grafton because I completed kindergarten in Worcester. However, if you were a student in Grafton and you're, you went to a.
You're in a, a private kindergarten, you wouldn't be able, and didn't meet that age cutoff, you wouldn't be able to, uh, enter. So it's basically offering that exception, the age exception for first grade rather than a kindergarten.
So, uh, that, that's what I was referring to originally is now this.
They would have participated and gone through a, a kindergarten program.
So this is now for Grafton residents?
Yeah, yeah.
Was my question.
Yes, yes.
So therefore it's, it, it's a workaround.
Yeah.
So I guess I just have to say again, then the whole argument.
Right.
For not doing this in kindergarten is not sort of a, a, um, sort of the principle of the thing, right? Because you're saying it's okay if you do it this way. It's okay if you sent your kid to private school. We, we don't actually think it's a bad thing, we just don't wanna pay for it.
And that, no, and that makes me very uncomfortable and I'll tell you what, I'm not gonna fight for this. I would leave it as is. I was trying super hard to think of a, a compromise on this, um, because I think we're very nice and that's, I mean, I'm just.
I don't think it's about nice.
No, but for me, I wouldn't fight for this. Because I think there's a lot of gray areas and then it goes with the equity, if I can afford, you know, which is stuff that I, but I'm trying to think of. I try, I don't know. So to me, this is a bit of a compromise and Jay felt more comfortable and please feel free to jump in, but felt free because they'd have more data from kindergarten, from the kindergarten programs as opposed to a preschool or a daycare program where there aren't the standards. So we have the standards of the kids who could come from a, a, a kindergarten program versus a preschool or a daycare environment that it's, it's a little bit more willy-nilly. So that was kind of where we were coming from with the willy-nilly. It was perfect.
Well, I wasn't gonna use that term, but the explanation was good.
Another piece is just the numbers. And so in my own, like, professional experience, but it's the same when we were talking to Jay too, was that, um, you have sudden influx of students in kindergarten that for entering, it's the most, it's the biggest unknown. And that's the area where you need the smallest class sizes. And so when you get over that threshold, you're adding lots of teachers too and that's just from, um, any incoming. So we, we get faced with that, you know, often every year, we don't know and you try to get everyone to meet the deadline and come in. But a lot of people just, you know, give the information right, right before. It's just, it's more of an unknown for numbers, so, but when you have your kindergarten numbers, um, the unknown is, is smaller. Did I explain it well?
But if you had those children who are coming in and let's say there's six new children who could be this year, could be next year, and then instead of having them all be next year because they didn't meet that arbitrary deadline, you're actually making it less of a sudden influx. You're saying, okay, two are gonna come in this year, but all those other four that, that the parents don't want them to even, you know, attempt coming in earlier, we don't think they're, they have a, a reasonable, um, approach to coming in early. That would actually smooth out your entry. Because otherwise, those six kids who just moved into school, they just moved into town, they're all coming next year all at once, except for maybe there's two of them who maybe are able to deal with the, the, um, the work and the socio-emotional, et cetera, and so they come this year instead. So now you've let, made it less of a shock to the system because you have made that a little bit of a spread. A few come this year, a few come next year.
I don't agree, but that's okay.
Yeah, I know neither.
But it would, I mean, that's just logic.
I think it also gives this first grade, uh, you, uh, people a time to realize too that maybe I shouldn't, you know, it just gives you one more year, one more time. But, uh, you know, like I said, this is our recommendation and somebody can make a motion and somebody can make, this is for the first reading, we can go back and work on it some more, or we can take it off the table altogether. So it's up to you guys at this point.
And maybe just, and maybe, and maybe just to make it clear to, maybe you can explain the policy better for everyone in the public is the current policy states that if someone lives in Grafton, they can't, they, if they want, if they wanna go ahead, they have to be private kindergarten and first, or do something else kindergarten first, but they can come in second. Is that right? They can't come in first, but is that, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Right.
We didn't even get to second grade.
No, but that's, that's the change, it's coming, th- this change was originally because of this, the second graders.
No.
No, that's right.
First, fourth grade.
No, 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 but like I'm saying, like, okay, only cause I know second graders who live in town and then they came around, but it was through.
They went to like Montessori or.
Or.
Yeah.
Lily Pot.
Yeah.
But because, because, because. Because they couldn't, because I think they said they couldn't get in kindergarten first, but was second.
Right.
I just want to.
It's just the entry to the system.
I don't think we have a policy for when you can enter second grade.
Okay.
We couldn't make one. But, uh, yeah. So I know, I know, this is complicated and I really appreciate everybody's feedback and input and.
So the subcommittee, if I'm understanding, has a recommendation for a first reading tonight in the booklet in addition to an endorsement from Jay, um, as he does recommend modifying the existing first grade entrance policy, which is JEB dash two. Uh, so does the subcommittee wanna make a motion as a first reading?
Sure.
I make, okay. Also, I make a motion for section J instruction, JEB two, entrance age requirements, grade one, as a first reading.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion?
Is it something you guys wanted us to go back and hammer out or look at or?
You know, it might help, um, is to say, so, you know, here's Suzie. Suzie's born on blah, blah, blah. This is what is, this is what would constitute.
So give an example like I talked through?
Yeah.
Sure.
Cause that helps me figuring out what it is that's gonna happen with this.
All right, well, and in the meantime, if you think about it more, you know, email Jay, uh, we'll try to get a meeting, um, to talk it through, probably I'm guessing after. Um, so think, if you think about something or something comes to you, let Jay know and he can share it with us and we can work on it.
I guess my, my other question is where it says allows a child to enter grade one before turning six, so it's basically like any age.
Well, they would've had to have completed a kindergarten.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but if that child completed the kindergarten from the age of three to four, for instance.
And they'd have to pass a very, yeah, I suppose, that's, we can discuss that. Yeah, I see where you're coming. Okay, anything else?
All right, still have a motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the first reading? All those opposed? I declare motion carried. You're abst- oh, sorry, please record the motion as four zero one. Melissa's abstaining.
And I mean, I should remind, people can always go, no, too, I mean, yeah.
No, it's just you've put a lot of thought into this and.
Yeah, that's okay though.
I mean, I think I'm still thinking.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I just, I feel like we, you know, it's a good discussion.
Give us first reading.
Your section, your opinion. See, the problem with doing policy earlier is usually we're done after policy and now we've got more thinking to do.
We have more thinking to do and I would like to pick back up under general business, under C for FY twenty budget, uh, vote. Um, as you understand, we've held off on voting on the final school committee budget, um, due to just some of the financial situations that were going on in Grafton. Um, so tonight, um, if the committee is ready or if it wants to delay voting on a final number, um, it is on our agenda to make the decision.
I'm ready for a vote.
Okay.
I think, yeah, though, I don't know.
I have a question, the one that was in there, it was like two thousand eighteen or was I looking at the wrong thing?
Same this right here. I believe it's on page thirty seven in the book.
Sorry, I had said, outed it by accident. What page?
Thirty seven.
Thirty seven.
Page thirty seven.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the Grafton Public Schools fiscal year twenty twenty operating budget for a total of thirty-six million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars as submitted.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion?
No, but I just wanna say, I think the budget book is well done. I really appreciate that it's online. I hope everybody takes a look in it. Um, it answers every question I always have and, um, I appreciate all your hard work.
We appreciate that, thank you. Does anyone have any further discussion?
I just have a couple of statements I'd like to make with regards to this budget. Um, so the vote tonight that we're taking, uh, for tonight's budget is a reduction from our initial request of five point four seven percent to four point five percent. And for the public's knowledge that that delta, that difference is we're cutting our requests to the town by three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, what does this mean? Uh, it means that we can't fund the things that we as the school committee and the district believe is necessary or important to us, but we understand that with the financial situations of the town, that we have to make these decisions, uh, in ahead to plan for town meeting for a balanced budget. Um, there are still some unknowns out there with state funding. Um, we don't know for sure what will happen until sometimes after town meeting about whether could we get some more per student funding or maybe get cut less per student for funding. But I just want the public to know that, um, we don't make this decision lightly tonight. I know it seemed like a pretty quick, uh, vote, but we have been discussing this budget, I would say since September, li- beginning of October. Um, I personally, and I think I speak on behalf of the committee, wanna thank Dan Gale, uh, Jay Cummings and his, and the whole staff, uh, for putting out multiple revisions and analysis of what the school budget means and trying to find every single dollar necessary to fund a, what we consider a level services only budget. And again, I wanna thank the community as well for their continued support. I know a lot of people have asked us either individually or at school committee meetings about what does this mean? Um, and your advocacy and your questions are welcome, uh, and we encourage the community to continue, uh, support and advocacy for the schools. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done, all those in favor? Okay, the motion carried, five zero. Thank you very much.
Is there a vote for yes reluctantly?
With reservation.
That's the half hand up.
All right, um, next up, uh, we have, uh, we're gonna skip over North Street Elementary School Window Repair Project, we're getting an update on that hopefully, um.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, thank you, Jay. Uh, school committee member reports. So, um, I have it here in parentheses tonight, um, I know that we wanted to discuss, uh, the sustainability committee. Um, good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Tyler, nice job on your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anya, thank you. Good to see you both.
Um, so I just wanted to give the committee, uh, to this meeting to come up with its final remarks that we can share with the entire board of selectmen. Um, and we'll discuss next steps during this time. So does anyone would like to go?
I do, I don't have it up, so if anybody has something else. Just need a minute, I thought I pulled it up, I have so many things open, I'm like, oh, I do, okay. So I couldn't figure out, I didn't share it with anybody because of meeting law, but, um, so. My continued concern about this is I don't think the charge is clear. There's a section in it that says to improve the town's operation efficiency and effectiveness in future fiscal year, including operational efficiency and effectiveness of the executive board of selectmen and school committee branches of the Grafton School Government. I feel like it's gonna be hard to talk through without seeing it. How hard would it be for me to project? Hard?
Nope, send it to me and I'll project it.
I didn't think about it, but I think it, I think edits are really hard to just talk through. And I brought this up and I've been. I think that makes it sound like the committee is coming to evaluate the effectiveness of the board of selectmen and the school committee. And I wanna say, I'm not afraid of that. If that's what a committee wants to do, have at it, but my understanding of that committee was that it was to talk about the financial implementations, not how effective we are. Let's face it, we're government, we're not always the most effective, right? Sometimes we make mistakes, sometimes we need to reset, right? But, um, I think that, that to me was not what I understood what the sustainability commission was supposed to be for. So my recommendation was to take that second, oh, sorry, Jay, I haven't sent it to you. What would be easiest, should I text it to you?
Uh, email.
Email it. And that's Cummings. Just kidding, that was funny.
I, I was gonna ask for a minute, I was like, did you really need his email address? Cause.
I never email. Um, yeah, so I don't know Melissa, I know, I don't know if you had an, um, my edits aren't. And I also took a stab, so I looked because I've heard how great Newton's Sustainability Committee was, so I reached out to people in Newton and they very kindly shared with me their, uh, which is all online, so anybody can go look, um, what their, uh, submission statement was. And it was, it was a little bit different than what was on here. Um, so I added in some of what I liked. Do you have it yet?
Yep.
Thanks. Um, and then we'll be able to see it, maybe I'll get up and point. So I just changed that it should be offering guidance to the executive board and school committee members and that the, um, as part of its overall review, the GSC, the Grafton Sustainability Committee should look at the assumptions about revenues and expenditures to determine if the forecast for the next five years, and that can change if we don't wanna do five, we wanna do three, I don't know, is within the range or reasonable projections and if adjustments should be made on what basis. The GSC will provide research comparables, forecasts, and ultimately will provide Grafton with key information that Grafton government can draw upon to make key long, long-term fiscal decision in the future. I copied and pasted that directly from Newton, so I plagiarized it, um, which I know is a no-no in schools, uh, so.
I think you could quote it.
Put a big quote in the beginning?
This is all what Newton's was, just for reference for me, cause that's how I work. So if you wanna scroll up. Can you make it?
I'm trying. You guys are really testing me tonight.
Dan, can you help him?
Wow.
But I, well, while we're doing this, just to comment, I think that your first comment is the important one, is it's not clear what the charge is, it's also not clear how, what the oversight is, it's not clear how it will be evaluated.
Right. So this is, I mean, I think this is, I recommend everybody to, I have all the links, I'm happy to share them out just to make it easier, but, uh, this is what Newton's blue ribbon, I love that, commission, um, to look, it was, it was really focused on financial resources and expenses. And what my overall understanding was, was that was what this was gonna do. It was gonna look at everything and work with the committees and bring on some community members with some fresh eyes and come back and kind of say, hey, where it's going on, where can we be smarter? Um, the way it's written, I really feel like it's going after how committees are run and maybe that's something we also need to do? I don't know, but that to me wasn't how it was explained to me. So I felt pretty strongly about this operational efficiency and effectiveness piece. Um, I don't mind the improving, right, of operational efficiency and effectiveness in future years, um, including, and then it's repeated here, which I didn't make sense and that really just led me to think, okay, we're really looking to see how dysfunctional we are as boards. And like I said, I'm alone, some of our dysfunction, but I do think for the most part, we get the job done and we're functional. Um, so I just changed that to offering guidance, cause it's an advisory board. And then, um, I added this from Newton, cause I thought this made it a little bit clearer, but I am certainly open to more, but, um.
Can you read that? Um, I can't see that part. So just can you read what you added from Newton? Do you mind?
Yeah, sure. As part of its overall review, the GSC, obviously I changed it from Newton, should look at the assumptions about revenues and expenditures to determine if the forecast for the next five years is within the range or responsible projections and if adjustments should be made on what basis. The GSC will provide research comparables, forecasts, and ultimately will provide Grafton with key information that Grafton government can draw upon to make key long-term fiscal decision in the future. So the researching, they're giving it to us and then we can take what we've learned. It's not a overhaul.
Yes. The other thing, Laura, I looked at a couple of different, it's interesting when you look up, I'm sure you did sustainability commission, you get all kinds of stuff.[1754.02]
Sure, yeah.
But one that was interesting, it was, was somewhere in England where they then had to rapidly decommission it because it went out of control.
I didn't get to the out, out of the country.
Send it to you.
Was it called Brexit?
Well done. Um, the other is that other place, that was good. Other places had, um, where they were very clear about what the remit was and what the expectations were for each member. It wasn't just if you're interested.
Oh, sure.
We need somebody who has deep experience in nonprofit finance. We need somebody who is a citizen activist. We need, so it's very, you know, you, you, you can't just say we want, you know, seven upstanding citizens. You have to say, there's a point to having this and here's the knowledge and the background and experience that we need for this position and then this position. I think it was just way too.
Willie Nelly?
Yeah.
So one of, if I may add to that, one of the things I liked about it was that the three committees, the finance committee, school committee, and the board of selectmen submit their reps, and then once the reps are, uh, identified, it is they who choose the remaining members at large. So it's them that, it's they that look out for that skill set, which I thought was kinda more of like a self-governing. So they all have to agree on what that membership looks like. Um, and if they feel like they have too many people in finance, maybe they need to get a balance and they feel like they need to have people who might be in like more nonprofit advocacy or whatever it is along what you were, along the lines that you had mentioned. Um, but I did like that part of how the committee would almost be self-sufficient and formalize, and finish formalizing itself on its own without, you know, a bunch of three different committees trying to appoint a bunch of people.
And when, uh, Mr. Frisbee had called me and we talked about this initially, he did share that, like, had thought that too, like, really think about the specialized people that could come on board, like it wouldn't just be.
Right.
Laura from down the street who's good at, you know, I don't know what I'm good at, but something like that, you know? So, and I did forget, we had talked about changing, so there wasn't a.
Yes, I thought that there was too much of an imbalance there.
Right, which I didn't make that edit. Melissa thought we definitely can. Um, and then Newton talked about how this was, you know, it's not a, so I just really felt talking about the advisory piece.
I like that bit. I like what you put in. I think that's.
Stolen from Newton. Not my words. Bye.
So what's the next step for us, Peter? Um, if, let's say we agreed with all of these, which I do, so I think it's a nice addition for.
Communicating that.
So at this point, um, when I'd asked the selectmen to just wait to get from us, we wanted to s- submit our remarks as a committee to that committee who's gonna be formalizing this and they're waiting for those remarks. So if, if, you know, the committee is satisfied with the proposed changes, I believe if it's okay, I'd like to share this with the whole board of selectmen on behalf of the school committee. Um, and obviously if they have further questions, maybe they can invite, um, Laura or, uh, us, the school committee, to maybe ask us some more questions about it. I don't wanna delay it any further, but I think your remarks, I think, cover exactly what our concerns went from day one. Um, so if everyone's in agreement, I'm okay with it. I would like to forward this along to the board.
Do you wanna change the, uh, majority vote?
What's the, what do you guys think about the, I don't have a strong opinion, Melissa, I forget what you said.
Was your number. Now, it's a good number.
Yeah. So vote five additional members of Grafton versus seven.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So what I can do after this is I'll just clean it up, um, or should I leave my suggested edits? And I'll take all the Newton language above, just because. What do you want?
So do you want, I can send it to you or do I send it?
Just, just send it to me and I'll send it, uh, from us to the board of selectmen. Yep.
Get to it tonight.
All right. That'd be great. Perfect. Probably first thing in the morning. Yeah, I was thinking that too.
Okay, well, thank you guys so much. Um, and I do, I do know, well, hey, and I can copy and paste from the best of them, but, um, I do know that there was just, I guess this is gonna be a lot of work, so the kinda like more hands, which I think was the argument for the, but I like the balance of the, um, just so that it's not an overwhelming. Although I don't know if school committee and board of selectmen together would be a majority anyway, because we're separate.
Right.
Right? And so, anyway, but I'm happy to, that's fine.
Great. Thank, thank you, Laura, for doing that. Does anyone?
I think I'm not gonna talk the rest of this meeting.
Do we have a motion on that? Oh, did I say that out loud? I'm sorry. Can I hit the reset button? Thank you. All right. Um, do we have any other school committee member reports?
I have the, um, town report. So submitted, I, you know, I gave it to, um, Jay and I assume you submitted to Cindy already, so. It took me a while, but thank you for everyone who helped me. Um, so I'll just read like maybe some bullet points. Um, I, and the, so the report of the school committee that went to the town. Um, some of the highlights that I, um, spoke of was the strategic plan and how much work we did, um, with the strategic plan and all the initiatives for expanding social emotional learning throughout the whole district. Um, the district tech, um, technology department rolled out, um, Schoology and E-rate program and where we saved money. Um, so just all the great things that we have been doing. The fiscal update, um, so I said that Grafton spent twelve thousand, two hundred dollars per pupil, the ninth lowest in the state. The state average is fifteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars per pupil. Despite the low per pupil spending, the district consistently demonstrates strong performances in all areas and is highly competitive with neighboring communities. And after that, I talked about the school committee work we've been doing. So one of the significant things that we had updated in our policies was the homework policy. Um, so all the great work that went into that. And then I just mentioned the late start time September, since we've been doing a lot of work with that. So the strategic plan, homeworks, um, policy and the late start, start time subcommittee are probably the biggest highlights of the report. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Anybody else?
Uh, just an update from the later start time committee. We had a, a meeting recently and we have one more scheduled for next Tuesday. And, uh, I wanna thank Tracy for pulling together the information from the last meeting and, um, we will be working through a protocol at the next meeting to try to come forward with a recommendation from that committee to the school committee at a following meeting. That's our goal for the next meeting. Um, and then I would expect that would be a future agenda item where we would have a presentation from members of the committee to us about their recommended proposal.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? No? All right, moving on. Uh, Jay, do you have a district update?
Um, we've touched on most of it. Uh, Debney updated the upcoming events. That's in your book. Uh, today was our first day of online MCAS testing at the high school. So MCAS season is here, if you will. I wanted to thank Neil, Trey Hand, the tech team, the admin team and the teachers for all their work, uh, day one. Rarely goes super smooth and it did, believe it or not, today. So that was a big sigh of relief. Um, and then at our next meeting, I'll do a full presentation on a grant that we were recently awarded uh, with the Safe Roots to School Program at Millbury Street Elementary School. So, that's, that's great. Uh, Laura was actually the first one, uh, to see it and pointed out. Tony La May put it in. Uh, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars for sidewalks around Millbury Street.
Wonderful.
Very needed. It's definitely like a little island surrounded by mud. So it'd be great and I'll speak to it in two weeks.
That's great. Thank you, Jay.
It's really.
Yeah, that is great.
Laura and Tony did all the work putting it together. So I'll drag him along to the next meeting. Excellent.
It's just such a good program, that Safe Roots Walk to School. And we're starting soon at North Street School. If anybody wants to be a guest costume guard, Melissa, we have to have you. Yeah, but anybody else?
That effort for the record did not last long.
I was only kidding.
Under a minute.
I mean, who would make the motions?
Who's keeping time? All right. Um, future agenda planning, uh, besides the, uh, later start times, which will get probably some definitive, um, feedback at the next meeting.
After the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, was anything else?
Yeah, um, we are coming to May, um, and we need to get Jay's evaluation on.
Yes, we do.
And give us time to fill that out.
Yes.
So, um, we're definitely gonna be having a member leaving, so I wanna make sure that we can finish that before then.
All right.
So we have to back out this week.
Peter, at some point, we're gonna have to figure out, uh, we've got a con- conflict on May fourteenth. I found it today that the Everyday Heroes scheduled their event on that evening. So if nothing else, I know that G H S, um, improvement plan in their school report will have to get, get moved. So you and I can kinda figure that out, but I wanted to make you aware of it. I don't know if that is.
Need to miss that, too.
Yeah.
That's an important day and it's, uh, for those of you who don't know, it's really worth going and seeing what a lot of the hard work does and, um, and, you know, they do this once a year, so I completely understand. So Jay, you and I will work out something, uh, in May and we'll make it work. Okay.
I mean.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? Anything else? I do have one request. Uh, I received an email last week from, uh, I believe one of the chairs from, um, the Grafton CPAC, Special Education, um, Parent Advisory Group. And she asked that, um, we put, uh, CPAC on one of the school committee agendas. Um, my recommendation would probably to have them after we do the last school. Um, you know, we, you know, probably after the high school, so it'd be sometime either late May or maybe no later than early June. But, uh, I just wanted to give you a heads up and they should be, I, I personally think they should be on our, uh, agenda once a year. Um, I know they've had some renewed interest in the group and they've got some new leadership this year. Um, they wanna put together a presentation to really discuss about, uh, what they are and their purpose uh, and, uh, just give, uh, the committee an update. So, um, they're eager to get on our agenda. So I will be adding them.
And I would recommend in the future that they would be on an agenda in the fall. You know, moving forward, that, that way people can learn about it upfront and then.
Okay.
Through our live meetings and all the new viewers we're getting right now. But, um, I think that would be great at the beginning of the year too, uh, just so people are aware of the organization. Didn't we used to, didn't they used to present?
They did, but I think we had like a.
Back in the day?
We had a, we had some, um, due to participation numbers and stuff, they, they were pretty quiet for a little while. Like I said, with this renewed interest, there's, uh, more people going to the meetings lately and there's, um, seems to be some growing support within that community, um, and their advocacy.
They didn't need to come here to get the growing support.
What's that?
They didn't even need to come. And they still got growing.
They do have growing support, yes. All right, so what we'll do is, uh, we'll have them, uh, sometime in May after the high school's, uh, presentation. Um, and then we'll obviously talk to them about coming back in the fall, maybe mid-September, one of those meetings. Okay. Anything else on future agenda planning? Okay, approve more minutes.
Peter?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from March twelfth, two thousand nineteen as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Clear motion carried. Um, I think that's the only ones we have. We have a financial warrant to approve tonight. Warrant number thirty-eight. We flipped the page sixty-seven.
Um, I'd like to approve, uh, warrant number thirty-eight dated March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen for a total of two hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Clear motion carried, five to zero. All right, thank you very much. Um, we've covered policy.
I think we have another warrant.
We do. My bad. Thank you.
See, good thing I was still talking. I would like to make a motion to approve warrant number thirty-one dated March, uh, twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Warrant thirty.
Thirty-nine. What did I say, thirty-eight?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one?
I was, I don't know. Maybe I heard wrong.
No, maybe I said it. Let me rephrase. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant number thirty-nine dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen for a total of four hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-two cents.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Clear motion carried, five to zero. Okay, we don't have a reason to go into executive session tonight, um, so entering a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.